Going to get started, I see that we have one thirty, right on time and want to say thank you for for everyone being here on time. Want to note that this meeting, this special meeting was properly posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and we are in compliance and official and able to meet today, super excited about that and we will start by asking this Cassie to call the roll.
Verlin Kearns.
Present.
Jimmy Durant.
Present.
Christine Bird. Dejean Jones.
Present.
Jeff Dismuks.
Present.
Aaron Engelke. Chris Steele.
Present.
Seeing a quorum, we will proceed and I would ask our members and our guests, as you were able to please stand for the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Kearns, would you lead us in our pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is should be citizen participation. Seeing none? We will move forward and let me get back to been so long, I'm out of practice here, I apologize. Guess our next item of business is approval of our minutes. Will there be any discussion? Any discussion regarding our previous minutes and they were emailed out and also I believe in the attachment? Seeing no discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve our minutes from March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Have a motion and Mr. Dismuks, if you could make that motion on your tablet? And if there is a second?
I'll second it.
See a second? All those in favor, please vote by by yes with a yes and all opposed with a no?
I'm stuck on the minutes.
Listen, that's why we're here. That's that's you're you're in good shape. We're going to get all these kinks worked out and we're going to be running smoothly by the time we meet again.
Ms. Jones, if you'll please cast your vote verbally?
Yes.
If you'll turn the mic on?
Yes, I approve the motion.
Thank you.
Seeing a vote of five to zero, the the motion passes. Next agenda item, missed discussion and possible action concerning the monthly report and current data pertaining to the Oklahoma County Detention Center? From, listen, we we want to, we want to do it right and we have our director here today to to present the report, I would note at the expense of not disclosing too much information, but I think several on on the leadership team within the detention center are are ill and and may have contracted COVID and they're taking all the precautions necessary and would just publicly say that we are, we are thinking of them, we're we're keeping them in our thoughts and prayers and Mr. Timmons, we especially appreciate you being here with us today and we would invite you to the to the podium to give the report.
If it's okay, I'm just going to kind of do a Reader's Digest version of that report that I did for Monday. Just kind of hit the home or the highlights. If I can operate this, there we go. And to start out with, we did a pay comparison of several agencies within the state. We're ranked number six within the state of the facilities listed there, which causes us issues when it comes to recruitment and retaining people. We constantly lose people to other facilities or other jobs even because of what our pay is. You know, our biggest asset is the fact that we are able to provide the benefits package that we have available to people, but you know, young folk are not particularly interested in what the benefits are when you're young. It's like when you get my age and above, you know, that becomes important then. This talks about our retention rate as compared to other agencies. We've got about a twenty-three percent loss rate in all areas, not just detention. Well, overall employees, combined DOs and CLRs is about twenty-three percent, just the detention officers alone is about thirty-one percent. If you've never, if you've never worked in a facility like Oklahoma County or anything, any jail correction type facility, that that is a very challenging job. They work twelve hours a day and and that's a regular shift, twelve hours a day. We're trying to do what we can to at least get that number down to ten hours. But the twelve hours usually turns to about fourteen, fifteen, sixteen hours sometimes, depending on how things are going within the facility. People have to stay over for reports, get information turned in or whatever situation may they may come up that would cause them to have to stay longer than what their normal time would be. That's just a little background information. Since two thousand twenty, we've lost over a thousand employees for various reasons and we don't always get to do exit interviews with those people. The ones that we get a chance, we we are starting to track that information on why they leave and and the majority of the time it's because of the pay or because of the long hours that they have to work. I would say, I would venture to say that those are probably the two, top two reasons or within the top five at least anyway, and pay probably being the number one reason why they separate from the detention center. This talks about our academy and we had an academy graduate on the eighth of September, or we have an academy that starts September the eighth. They go through eight weeks of classroom scenario based training and then they get another two weeks of jail training officer program, so they, we don't just get them through the academy and kick them out there, we make, we try to find somebody that would be a good teacher so they can show them how to do the job correctly. And right now we're only doing two weeks of of that, but at some point we hope to expand that to at least four weeks. I feel like four weeks on the job training would probably be sufficient, but we have to go with what we have right now just because of the numbers. And some of the recruiting strategies that we have in place, UCO, which is new, met with them a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to enter into a partnership with their corrections and criminal justice classes and start having internships with those students at the facility. And hopefully we can attract some of those people to apply for different positions within the agency. And I think it kind of benefits them, it gives them a look at what corrections looks like, either at a county level, state level, or whatever they decide to do, or if they decide to pursue a career in law enforcement with the police department or or whatever. It kind of gives them a leg up because they they will have that experience of dealing with various situations and and working at jail allows them the opportunity to get involved in lots of situations that they would face in that line of work. The Indian Meridian VOTC, they just started back up this month, so we are going to reach out with the instructor that does a program up there, believe it's called a police explorer program, so we want to explore that some more with them and see what possibilities we can develop from that. I'm told that they have a pretty good enrollment in that program at Indian Meridian up there in Stillwater. We've been in talks with the police department and sheriff's office as well and trying to develop that partnership with those people that want to be police officers or sheriff's deputies and they're not quite old enough to be a police officer, so they can come to work for us, get a couple of years' experience and if they decide they want to move on to the police department, the sheriff's department, you know, we'll give them a good reference and hopefully it bears out well for them. Same thing with Francis Tuttle and Lanes University, we've also tried to reach out to them or we're in ongoing talks with them as far as the the programs that they have. Just trying to to do what we can to get people to apply and come to work at the facility. This talks about the daily cost of incarceration. There's a lot of talk about that and and like I was trying to explain, that doesn't come from us. There's an independent company that does all the research, comes up with all the numbers and they figure out what that daily cost is in the first day of incarceration. As you can see by the chart, May of this past year was our highest month for detainees or inmates at the at the facility. And these people are the ones that self-report as homeless and as far as we know, that information is probably accurate, but I'm going to say it's probably a little bit higher because not everyone participates in the questionnaire when they ask, when they're asked, you know, where they reside or if they have a home, but those are kind of the costs for May, just based on the one hundred ninety-two dollar amount for one day at that number, that's the cost. Over the eleven months, we broke that down, over the eleven months and we came up with that cost of nine hundred thousand and that number, as I indicated earlier, is just over forty-five hundred of the people that reported homeless. That's not a requirement on their half, on their behalf, we ask the question, they answer if they choose to, if they choose not to. That's all we have to go by. This is just some updates in the receiving area. This is, I spoke to the staff in that area and I don't know how many or if any of you have been in that area in the past several months and can compare what it looks like now versus what it did before they took the initiative and cleaned the area up. You know, this shows me they took the initiative, took on this project, updated it and did a phenomenal job. Painted, hung graphics and it looks like a totally different place now. And kudos to those guys for the work that they put in doing that. A lot of that they did on their own time, at their own expense, some of it was at their own expense, but they took ownership of it and made it professional, which is what I appreciated. It gives a different look to the facility, that professional look, ownership in that crew that works in that area. And again, you know, kudos for them to, for coming up with that, taking the initiative and making it happen and getting it done. This talks a little bit about the technology. We talked before about the radar collection data or the ability to collect the radars or collect the data of people that are housed in certain areas at the facility. And and this information that it collects is not stored anywhere, but it's able to monitor heart rate and breathing in a cell. So when they finish with it, it will send alerts to not just the staff on that floor, it will send alerts to our control room and it, I'm told that we can set it up to where it will send text messages to the shift commanders and the captains that are working as well, so this should alert us whenever there's a resident there that may be in distress because the heart rate or the breathing will change and this will be real time information that will alert people so we can get people moving in the direction they need to before, hopefully we can catch something before it gets bad. Right now, it's on the mental health floor, which is our most challenging, one of our most challenging floors. They've got all the cells done with the exception of five. And they should have those, that that technology completed by the end of this week and it'll just be a matter of finding the radar so that it can capture the information that it needs to capture and being able to set that, set up those alerts to where they go to the places where they need to go. The H-back project proceeding on schedule, this helps us maintain the temperature controls throughout the facility. As I mentioned earlier, I don't know if any or how many have been there, but we have a huge gap in temperatures from floor to floor and even from room to room, sometimes it could be like as cold as fifty degrees in one area, one room, and maybe as hot as seventy-five, eighty degrees in one area. With this new H-back system, we'll be able to regulate that a lot better so we can maintain a constant temperature throughout the facility from floor to floor, room to room. There's part of that project that's been put on hold until the September budget meeting to see how that shakes out before we're able to complete it. Jail tracker, I task two individuals at, on the staff level to explore how we can use our jail management system, this, that's jail tracker. And what our intent is a reduction of paper, correct a lot of mistakes to help with the release and intake of individuals when they come to the facility and they're booked in. And some of the things that we're looking at further, once we get the training throughout the facility, is improving the important, or incident reporting, the disciplinary action. It'll have an effect on the inmate accounts where we can account for what's on their books and what they owe. There'll be a section in there for medical, that'll be limited access to the medical staff. They will be the only ones that will be able to 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 view all the medical information, certain parts of it anyway. And training for staff, we've identified people that we want to use as trainers to help facilitate training throughout the agency. And that's a process, I've got one person that's assigned to it right now and she gets a little help here and there, but for the most part, she's working on it by herself, it's a huge project. We have, we have identified at least eighteen hundred accounts on jail tracker. And that I think is on the low end, so I know, I I'm reasonably sure that there are more than eighteen hundred people that are using jail, the jail tracker system and I think with the upgrades that we're going to, you know, enhance the use and the ability to capture data, collect data and retrieve data in in all areas. The pest control, we've made a significant increase in that. As you can see, we went from a high in the first quarter of last year, from July to September, we were at a high of a hundred and forty. And this past quarter, from April to June, you can see the numbers and I was told just yesterday, I believe, that we average about one point five tickets per month or per week, I'm not sure which that is, but I'm told that the only tickets that we get now, the majority of them are for roaches or spiders, so I have a person that full-time, that's all he does, is treat the facility from top to bottom. Spring and anytime he gets an inmate ticket that, there's a complaint about pests, he immediately takes care of it, so we've made a huge, huge dent in the pest control problem that we've had in the past. Some things that we've tried to do for the employees over there, we had an employee school drive for our employees, which was just an internal function and we helped at least forty employees with school-aged children, backpacks, school supplies, pens, papers, pencils, just stuff that kids need for school. It was very successful and very well received throughout the facility, I was impressed. Something new that we've started is recognition of employees within the facility. There's a lot of talk that goes on about the jails, you all are quite aware of, but it seems like our employees never get any kind of recognition for the good work that they do. I've got people that show up, come to work every day, they work hard and they take care of business and do it the right way. And I felt like those people needed some type of recognition for that, so what I've started doing is at least recognizing their efforts with a certificate, a challenge coin and allowing them a special parking spot for them on, so not a lot, but you know, at least it's something, it lets them know that they're appreciated, you know, we see what you're doing, keep up the good work and we're going to keep fight that good fight for them, get that recognition and what they deserve for the job that they do. Criminal investigations, they've been pretty active the last couple of months, thirty-one investigations, twenty-four charges filed, cases where charges were filed, they've got twenty-nine that are open, twenty-one that are closed and it's just a breakdown of the cases. Eleven for possession of contraband within a jail facility and contraband could be anything, most people think that it pertains to drugs and it does, but there are other things like tobacco, cell phones, just a couple of things that I can think of off the top of my head, but things that they aren't allowed to have in a facility and they filed the eleven charges for that. Ten charges for assault and battery on detention staff, two of the staff members were assaulted and checked by medical and we had two sent to the emergency room with relatively minor injuries that weren't anything that they couldn't come back to work the next day or within a couple of days. And we've had a couple of inmates that we filed assault and battery inmate on inmate fights. I had two employees graduate from the last CLEAT Academy last month and I have two more that are currently attending CLEAT. They graduate later this year, so that increases our total number to CLEAT certified people within the facility on staff to around twenty-four, twenty-five, I believe. A look at medical, trying to hire people in various positions within the medical area. Those are the openings and this talks about the number of VR visits that we had to send people out for. We sent seven out for a total of seven, thirty-four days and we've had forty off-site referrals and that refers to things that we are not able to take care of within the facility, it is significant enough to where they have to be sent to a hospital for treatment. Daily population. Lately it's been trending up. I don't have the current number, what today's population is, but we average about just over sixty-two bookends per day. We release about nineteen hundred per day and an average length of stay is just over seven days. We try to get them in, get them out as quick as possible and we try to get them out as quickly as we can because we understand that people want to get out, so we want to help them get out, we want them to help themselves to get out as well. This is just the breakdown of the current population from January to the current month. You can see that it's been on the rise. The green, is it the green? The red is from twenty-three, the blue is from twenty-four. Am I looking at the right, I can't see that very good. Red is twenty-four, green is twenty-five and blue is the average, average count, so you can see that it's been trending upwards every month since January with a peak in May, and I mentioned that earlier about that number in May, how how many that we booked in the month of May? This is what I was talking about, as far as self-reporting, when they go through the intake process. You know, they're not required to answer those questions, the ones that do, that's the information that we collect and you can see by the number there, thirty-three percent of the population there is homeless, identifies as homeless. We've had sixteen percent identify at the time of the processing in that they were under the influence, either alcohol or drugs, and another nineteen percent identify with some type of mental health disorder. Top charges. Two of the top charges are possession of a firearm by a felon, possession of CDS. And we have twenty percent of the population that has a hole for one reason or another, it could be an ice hole, it could be a a hole from another facility. But those are the two main reasons why they have holes on them. We have a hundred and forty-five that are in for murder, another twenty-one for manslaughter, a hundred and thirty of them are male and twenty-seven are female. Those are the top ten charges, as you can see on the graph. And like I said, the top two charges are possession of firearms by a felon and possessions of a controlled dangerous substance, what CDS stands for. Oklahoma City is our biggest customer by far, the sheriff's office, second, police department, Midwestern City Police Department and last, Highway Patrol. Recidivism, that means that we have a seventy-six percent, just over seventy-six percent of females that are repeat offenders and they're back. The same for males, it's just over eighty percent, there's a range breakdown for each, but there's a high probability that if it, if they've been there once, they're back again. This, uh, this talks about our special housing unit, the MHO is for mental health, the PC is protective custody. Which PC stays pretty level across the board from month to month. The MHO, you can, you can see the spikes and declines in that. And those are people that we have on our twelfth and thirteenth floors and where we're installing the radar so that we are better able to monitor what's going on with those folks. And it just, it fluctuates from month to month. These are some of the programs that we have in place for the population there. Prison fellowship, grief support, stand-up initiative, prison fellowship. What we are putting in place, job placement, basic skills for males and females and GED for males and females and that'll be sponsored by the Urban League and OIC. That's slated to start within the next week. We had some hiccups techno, with technology this week, but hopefully all that'll be ironed out and we'll be ready to kick it off by the first of next week. We had a surprisingly high amount of people within the facility that were interested in getting their GEDs. So we'll see how that goes as that program goes, both on the male and the female side. I don't have any numbers specific for each, but I was told that I don't have any numbers specific for each, but I was told that we had a relatively high number. And so we're gonna have to manage that as well with the class sizes. And that wraps it up and I'd be glad to entertain any questions you may have pertaining to this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Um, I was telling my friend, Ms. Jones, that I hope she's taking good notes because we're gonna save the questions to the end. But we're hoping to have a robust discussion. So if you would like to ask a question, we will um, we will just, I'm gonna start to my immediate right because she whispered in my ear during, during the, the presentation. So Ms. Jones, let's start with you, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Director Timmons. That was a really great report. I do have a number of questions. I wanna go back to the pay disparity first. Um, who sets the, who sets the starting pay rate?
Not really sure. I think it's just something that has been in place. I know it's been in place since I've been there, the same salaries for those positions and it hadn't changed. Well, I take that back. They got a pay raise, I think, two years ago. I think a slight increase, a cost of living adjustment.
Is, is there a way you can go to that slide?
Sure.
It was the, I think it was the first one, very first one. Because the county, you said the county jail falls in at number six. Um, but uh what, what you didn't say, but I had heard before, is that the, the Oklahoma County Detention Center is housing more people than any of the others.
Yes, that's correct.
So, so it would make sense. I think Tulsa, Tulsa was at the higher end of the pay scale. So it would make sense for detention officers at OCDC to be paid more.
Yes, um, they're slightly below Oklahoma County right now where they said, and I think those numbers are correct. Um, but yeah.
Okay, oh yeah, it wasn't false. But I'm, I'm, I was curious who sets the, the pay and also those twelve-hour shifts, what number of days?
So it's kind of a weird schedule because of the way the pay cycle works. I think they work like three days one week and maybe four days the next week.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and let's see, the, on the, the cost of incarcerating the homeless population. That there, so, so that's a, a, almost a million dollars, a million dollars a year if, if it went out twelve months. That it costs us to um, for homeless, for the homeless to be incarcerated.
Well, it's probably on the low end, cause like I said, that number that pe- of people that report, that's based on the information they give. And those are the ones that we know about because they've reported. There may be people that are on there that don't report themselves homeless. Maybe they give an address for, from where they were arrested or the uh information at booking was used from where they were arrested. That mean that they live there, just where they were arrested. So that's probably a little bit on the low end.
Okay, so my question is, in the, in the intake process, are there any um, any services provided to them? Um, to them and for that matter, veterans, provided to them on the front end of that identification as either veteran or homeless?
I know they're asked if they're veteran or if they're uh veteran status. Um, we do a screening process and yes, have to forgive me, I'm not real familiar with it. But there's a series of questions that they go through. I know that uh, medical being the first part of that, they're evaluated to see if they're in um good enough shape to be in the facility. That means that if they've been involved in a situation where they may have been injured, like a car accident, a fight or whatever would have caused them to be injured. There's a medical process that they have to go through at the very beginning. And once they get released from that, if they're cleared, then there's another process, another part of the process that, that starts. If they're not cleared, whatever agency brings them in, that agency has to take them to a hospital to get clearance from a doctor at that, at, at a medical facility to determine whether they're suitable to be uh held in, in custody at the jail.
Okay, okay. So, so, so there may not be any additional services that are provided to them on the front end just by their designation as being homeless?
I think I know what you're asking me, but um everything is included in the front end, like a meal, uh medical screening, um. I wish I had my notes here, but I didn't bring them. But there, there's a process that includes about probably seven or eight things that's covered in that first day of incarceration. It drops after the second day, subsequent days, because you're not going through the same process. You know, we had to provide uh probably a jail, jail clothing, the medical part of it and uh, and I'm kinda locking up here. I don't remember the whole process, but I've got it, so.
No, no problem. I, I understand. I think you answered my question. Um, on the, the, the radar.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there a limit on the number of people that that can, can pick up in an area?
I don't believe so. I, I can't answer that a hundred percent, cause I've not been involved in that project other than just kinda being kept in the loop as far as the installation and, and progress.
Uh, the jail tracker. I, I took notes, everybody, I took notes. I had good notes. Um, I have a question about jail tracker. Um, so jail tracker is the, is it a new system that you're incorporating? Okay, so it's.
It's been there for a while. We've just never used it to the potential that we are capable of. And I think we just found out what all we can do with it recently. And so we're exploring that. I mean, we're paying for it and it's never been used the way that it can be used. So we're, we're gonna expand that use.
So who enters the information in jail tracker?
Well, there's several places. I mean, they enter part of it in their receiving process. There's a part that uh they do in booking. There's a part they do in uh processing as far as uh classifications where these people need to be housed, uh, how they needs to be, need to be housed. If they need special housing as far as like uh mental health or uh uh SP one status, protective status or administrative status, um. Uh, DS, desegregation or uh DS, I'm not sure what it stands for. But uh, there, there's a number of people that use it, that, that input information. Um, I think that there's even a part where they inventory property or there is a part where they can inventory the property and enter it in jail tracker. And I think that will help us keep better track of people's property.
So you, you mentioned that there was, there's one person and, and they're kind of tasked with getting everybody trained. Um, but there, there were eighteen hundred, uh, I guess, records in there.
Users.
Eighteen hundred users that can have access to jail tracker, okay. So have, have you given any thought to what it means uh like to add to the depth of that training? So that you can get the people trained faster?
Yeah, I've got one person right now that's, that's getting jail trackers set up the way that we want it set up.
Okay.
She is the most experienced with jail tracker and, and pretty much knows all the functions. So once she gets everything set the way that it needs to be set with assistance from uh support at jail tracker, we have identified other members within the facility that we're gonna use as trainers. We're gonna get them spun up on how to be trainers and what they need to train on. And then we'll go facility-wide, retraining all of our staff on how to correctly use jail tracker. Cause there's gonna be some areas where people have never used before that'll be new to them. And so we need to get everything identified, set up the way we need it set up. The uh different permissions at different levels set up and uh permission for the different divisions that use it as well. So it's a process.
That's good. On the population trending, um, you have any thoughts as to what happened in May? And what's happening in twenty twenty-five that is causing that upward trend?
I was told that uh Oklahoma City had a special event. Not sure what that was, but they arrested a number of people. I heard it was over a hundred. I don't have any information to back that up, but uh I heard they had a special event where they made a lot of arrests, which caused the number to go high. And as far as why it continues to trend upward, your guess is good as mine.
Now, these are desperate times, uh, you know, the, these are, I'm sure there's a lot of reasons, these are desperate times.
Ms. Jones, if I may, I'm gonna ask that you ask one more question and then I'm gonna share the cue and then come back to you, if that's okay.
Perfect. I just have one more question. On that, you have a graph of people that are in hold status?
Correct.
Um, the, I'm curious if the people who are uh, who are on hold, does, does that reflect uh with, with those other entities? Are, do they pay anything to uh the county jail for, for the county jail holding there?
I would have to research that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
But you're all great questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Durant. You're recognized.
I too have a series of questions.
Okay.
Maybe not quite as many as Ms. Jones, but some of the things that she asked about, I wanna follow up on. I wanna go back to the number of employees. First of all, you said you currently have two hundred and ninety-four employees. You said, and then there's a, a says, does not include medical. So the two ninety-four plus the forty-eight medical, is that correct? Or does that two ninety-eight include, or two ninety-four include the medical?
Ah, I think that includes medical now, since they are not um employed by turnkey. They're employed by the detention center now.
Okay, uh, you talked about the academy beginning on September the eighth. Do you know how many potential employees you have going through that academy?
We have seventeen.
Seventy, is that about the average size of your academy?
And I hate to keep saying it, but it varies. I mean, our last class, we had we started out with around twenty, I wanna say, and we finished with eleven. We've had one academy since I've been there that we had, I think, twenty-five. Um, we had another academy where we had probably twenty. And I think that academy is kinda unique because all those people are still there. The majority of the people that are out of these last probably three or four academies, we've been able to retain them. And I think that has to do with the quality of training that they, they now get. And the programs as far as like the on-the-job training. We have a, we have gone to great lengths to identify people as trainers and, 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 and trying to get them to train the kind of partners that they wanna have to work with. So uh, again, it's a process trying to identify people that would make the trainers and teach these new employees how to do things the right way. And we feel like we've been lucky for the most part, especially the last couple of academies, that we've had the right trainers in place.
Okay.
We've also got some other safeguards in place where we try to get the uh lieutenants and captains a little bit more involved as well. So they kinda oversee that a little bit closer than what has been previously done.
Okay. I hate to use this term, but it's a military term, so do you know about what the washout rate is in your academies?
About twenty percent.
About twenty percent.
Mm-hmm.
You may have said that and I just missed it.
No, I didn't.
I, I wanna follow up on her, a little bit of the question about the, the radar system. You indicated that the reports go to uh the control room and certain other areas. But one of the things you said was it monitors things like heart rate and breathing and things of that nature.
Correct.
So does it go to the medical unit as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted, you didn't mention it went there and I wanted to make sure because that's one of the things that it's supposed to do.
One of the key places that I should've mentioned and I didn't.
And, and as you know, I have a very near and dear spot for the medical aspect of it, so. On the detainees, you, you, sixteen percent reported under the influence. Little different track here that I, I wanna go down. Realizing that Oklahoma City Police Department is your number one consumer of your services at this point in time. And if they're bringing in a number of individuals that are reporting that they're under the influence and that may be their only charge, they, they, they're not in possession of anything, maybe they're just drunk, public drunk.
Or either high.
Or high.
Yeah.
It costs money and time and resources to book that individual that is only high or drunk into the detention center.
Correct.
It takes resources that we shouldn't have to be spending money on as taxpayers of the state of Oklahoma, especially in Oklahoma County. Especially when at the corner of Sixth and Virginia, there is what we all lovingly refer to as detox. The public and eBrid alternative. Is there a possibility that your booking staff could say to those officers bringing that individual in? Have you considered taking them to detox and not to jail?
So that's the officer's discretion. We don't have anything to do with that. And I'm sure that they are well aware of the facility.
Oh, I don't think the Oklahoma City Police Department is that well aware of it, sir. I, I, I hate to disagree with you. I happen to be the chair of the Oklahoma City Metro Alliance and we run PIA.
Yeah.
And we're going through a process right now of going to their academies and telling them about PIA because they, it's the best kept secret in the state of Oklahoma, in my opinion.
Right. I know back in the day when I worked across town up here, um, that was available. That was, that was an option and I didn't know that it still existed. And I just took for granted that local law enforcement agencies knew about it, so.
A- and that's why I ask, is there a possibility that your staff could say to them, hold on? Do you know this is available? Can we send them there? And, and again, I, I chair that organization. We're having a board meeting tomorrow and I looked at the PIA report for uh May through July.
Mm-hmm.
And our number one consumer, believe it or not, is the Oklahoma City Community College Police Department. They're bringing us more individuals than the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Department or the Oklahoma City Police Department at this point in time. So it's just, it, it's just something that I, I'm passionate about. I think we need to look at a way to save money and a way to also protect those individuals. They don't need a record.
Mm-hmm.
They don't need to be booked into jail.
I agree. And uh, I would, I would agree then, a lot of those officers probably don't know that it's available to them.
I'll get off my soapbox on that one, Mr. Seale.
Ms, Mr. Durant, if I may, first of all, let me say thank you, publicly thank you for this conversation. Mr. Timmons, let me also call timeout and say thank you for giving us this much of your time and really for the thorough discussion. Uh, Ms. Jones has a question and or comment to your line of questioning, so we're going to.
Okay.
With your permission, um, yield back to, to Ms. Jones.
I, I, I agree with you, uh, Director Timmons. I don't think they know that we still have a drunk tank here in Oklahoma. I, I didn't know that, that we did, but uh there is, they're obstructing an officer. That's one of, not on this, it's on one of the other, um, I guess it's the charges, the different charges. Um, and, and. And that may be a part of a, a link to the impediment, there you go. Uh, six percent um are charged with obstructing an officer. So, so if, so they've gotta know on the front end. Um, because the concern is that some people who, really their, their only crime may be that, that they're drunk. But they're, but they're drunk and so their behavior is not the best, which then leads to this other charge, which then justifies in being brought to the county jail. If, if there's some homework we can do, um, you know, with uh, you know, with the, the law enforcement agencies, you know, to let them know. And so, so that's a great suggestion.
I am uh, I'm, I'm gonna make a comment and then we're gonna go right back to questions. We have a couple of more questions. Ms. Jones, do you have another question on this?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
I, I do wanna say, um, so the purpose and couldn't be more excited about the Citizens Advisory Board getting filled back up and, and becoming active again. This is exactly the kind of conversations we're supposed to have uh, in our meetings and, and we're gonna get into our subgroups. It's the kind of work we're supposed to be doing. I do wanna point out, um, because I, I'm, I'm also struck by, by the questions and by the comments that in, in my estimation, um, the issue with the population in the county jail is, is not just, is not the sole responsibility of the jail. At the end of the day, you are responsible to process in who is brought to you and to care for those that, um, that are processed in. Um, it would be great if you could say, or if we could have a collaboration to say, you know what, it looks like this person may be better suited or, or could be better served in, in this location. But to Mr. Durant's point and to Mrs. Jones' point, I, I think there, there's a lot of work with a lot of different entities um, within our community, including the police department and all of law enforcement to say, you know what? There are better alternatives. There are more appropriate alternatives. And I, I just wanna be able to say that because at the end of the day, as it stands, you are, if the officer says, I want this person going to the detention center, and they bring them in, you've, you've got a responsibility to take care of them. And, but we need to figure out how we can, we can improve collectively as a community in that collaboration. Mr. Durant, you're recognized.
I just have one more question and, and it's, it goes to finances. You talked about the September budget meeting and we, we've all read in the newspaper and seen on TV recently the, the comments about the, the cost of the jail and, and things of that nature. And the city council, if I remember correctly, in Norman, uh, or the county commissioners in Cleveland County just recently voted to accept some inmates from Oklahoma City if they can work out that deal. That is going to put additional financial strain on your center, will it not? Because if they send them down there, they're paying Cleveland County and they're not paying the Oklahoma County Jail Trust, correct?
So, I think it's on, only going to affect a small percentage of the people that they arrest. And those arrests, from my understanding, will be in Cleveland County anyway.
Okay.
So, the parts of Oklahoma City are in Cleveland County. So, it's my understanding that they wanna make arrangements with the county jail up there to house their people that they arrest in Cleveland County. So it's probably gonna be a really small number.
Mr. Despikes, you're recognized.
So a couple of, I'm looking back at the staffing also, so, a- and I was noticing the numbers with Cleveland County based on your staffing. As part of what you were looking at there, do you also know where you rank as far as ratio of staff to inmate population compared to these other jails?
I wanna say that, um, we are eleven to one. Eleven inmates to one staff member.
Do you know where the other jails are?
I don't.
Be interesting to me. And how many, I think the other question is, how many people do you need? Um, you know, to, to get where you wanna be and what your ratio needs to be, how many people do you need?
That's an interesting question. Uh, my chief of the operations side, he gave me a number. And I think to efficiently operate just the detention side, I wanna say that number was around two hundred, just to be safe. I think there was a number. I could, I could be plus or minus a little bit, but I think that would be.
Two hundred on the floor, on the units?
Total.
Okay, and then.
To cover all the shifts and take care of all the responsibilities that they charge, they are charged with.
Do, how much on top of the current staffing, the overall total current staffing number would that, would that be?
I wanna say around, uh, eighty, eighty people.
You need additional eighty people.
I wanna say that's pretty close, around eighty.
All right. The, um, I also wanted to ask a little bit on the felonies and misdemeanors. Um, the, the numbers, the misdemeanors are, are high. And I know you had average length of stay for people coming in, seven point one days. How many of those misdemeanors are, maybe a more of a, do you have more of a breakdown, I think is my question, on what those misdemeanors are? Kinda goes back to looking at diversion opportunities as we go. How many of these misdemeanors are? Do we have a breakdown on, on what those charges are? Nonviolent offenders, break it out that way and, and looking at how long some of those are staying. The, that's curious to me because I, I know people do, for whatever reason, end up staying a long time on lesser charges.
So, my jail tracker person is trying to break that information out now. Uh, didn't get a chance to check with her today, so I'm not sure where she is with that. I know she's been working on it since Sunday or Monday, so I'm not sure exactly where she is. But that was one of my questions as well. Uh, we have those misdemeanor charges. Is it a city misdemeanor charge? Is it a state misdemeanor charge? And we're trying to find out the average length of stay for each. So I should hopefully have that information soon.
Yeah, kinda why, you know, you know, why are they, why are they stuck there with you? I think also looking at mental health, uh, numbers within that, uh, would be interesting uh, to see. On recidivism, the high, those are obviously really high recidivism rates. Do we have any idea of reasons why? Are there mental health reasons that are also complicating that or, or how are they reoffending? Are they reoffending with misdemeanor crimes? Or are we looking at low-level crimes? Have they elevated criminal activity as they're coming out? I'm trying to figure out the reason. If we have any kinda idea of what the reason is that people are coming back in. Other than just.
My opinion. Homeless and mental health. They get picked up, they get released, they go back, do the same thing, they get rearrested.
That's what I would expect also, which we're gonna have an item on the agenda later, uh, to talk about that. And so that's why I'm very interested in that.
I think some of the programs that we are getting ready to stand up may address some of that. Um, hopefully, we ha- we will have initiatives in place to where we will be able to help people with housing, education, uh, job placement, job readiness and those kinds of things. That is my, my goal, to do what we can to provide assistance to them to get them moving in the right direction and don't end up back in jail. Cause most of the time, those folks have nowhere to go. They have no other resources. I know that, uh, diversion hub does what they can, but they can only do so much. And I think that by having these other resources onboard, we'll be able to increase those numbers and, and what we're trying to get done.
That's my goal also. Uh, one last question, I'll be quick and, and this came up as I was listening to more discussion on the radar. So, uh, do we have, have we started, you've started utilizing the radars in some cells? And so I'm assuming we've had responses to that.
It's still in a test phase. They have to, uh, work out the algorithms with the radars.
That's why I was just trying to figure out if we had any idea between, at a point where you get a notice, what's the response time? And how long is it taken to respond? And I would assume that with staffing numbers low, uh, it would be a significant delay.
I, I don't think so. Uh, even now, whenever, um, we get calls, the response time is pretty quick. It would probably surprise you as, as to how, how quickly they, they are able to respond. And that's even without technology. Uh, sometimes another inmate may call it in or, you know, we have a staff member that catches something doing a site check or maybe a pod monitor that catches something and, and is able to call for help. Uh, be that medical staff or detention staff, if there's a fight between inmates or if it's a medical issue. So, our response times are pretty good.
That would be probably nice to have something, numbers that, where the community can look at it and see that. And to help, uh, offset some criticism.
Uh, I should've brought a pen. I usually have one, but I need to be making some notes as well.
I'll share mine.
Mr. Kern, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Uh, I'll be brief.
Okay.
You're the interim director. How long have you been?
Six months.
Six months.
Yes, sir.
So, all the data you shared was a lot of data. What, when you walked in that facility, what was the most glaring problem you could see that we need to know about? You thought we need to fix this first and foremost.
So, I started there in twenty-two. And I was assigned to the investigation division at that time as the chief of that division. So, I was kinda limited on my view of the facility. But one thing that I did recognize is the fact that, um, training was an issue. Staff was a problem. The numbers, I don't think were quite as low as they are now or around the same as they are now. But training, uh, people and a decent wage. Those are probably the three biggest things that I noticed, uh, just from the limited interactions that I had at that time. But going forward, um, I've had the ability to see a lot more areas. Um, and yeah, training is still an issue. Um, a decent wage and staff, those are all big issues. You know, and, and, and just the ability to fund the jail, to be able to do the things that we need to, to do, just on a day-to-day basis. Um, but you gotta have people to take care of those, those functions. You gotta pay them a, a wage that's fair, uh, at least adequate. And they need training. Uh, and we need to be funded at a level that we can afford to do all those things.
Okay. Um, so, somebody gets arrested, they're brought to you and they're dropped off at your front door. And they're booked in. How long now does it take for them to be released, supposing their bond's been posted? The reason I ask this, I had an employee. She never so much as had a parking ticket in her life and left a bar one night, had one too many and was brought to the jail for DUI. She called me at home and I called and had a bondsman post her bond. It was about midnight, Saturday night, Sunday morning. It was thirty-six hours before she was released.
Right.
Just sitting there.
So I apologize for that, but.
Well, well, I will say it was before your time. You said six months, it was before you. Have we done anything to address that? Have we sped that up? How long would it take now?
That's a difficult question to answer, depending on, uh, the number of people that are waiting to be processed in, processed out. Uh, we have people that are continuously coming in. So, when they come in, we had to stop what we're doing, uh, take care of those people that are coming in as well. Manpower in that part of the jail is just not where it needs to be. Um, I haven't had a number in that area of the facility in a long time. Probably pretty close to a time when I first started. Staffing is not best practice throughout the facility, but, uh, there are areas where it doesn't meet best practices all over the facility as well. Um, there are two, two areas I can think of right now, right off the top of my head that, um, it's a challenge. It is a challenge to meet the best practice level for staff just in two areas.
Well, if I'm not understanding. You're the director. Who do we need to talk to to figure out why we're not implementing best practices?
People.
People. We don't have enough people. We don't have enough money and we don't have enough people.
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. Um, do you have any AA, NA meetings in there?
Yes, sir.
You do? Okay, great. And one more question. If some of us wanted to tour, would you take us on a tour and show us around? Okay.
Absolutely.
I would love to do that. Thank you.
Just let me know when. I'll get it set up. We'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Seeing no additional questions, Mr. Timmons, thank you for the report.
Thank you. I hope I was able to answer your questions as completely as possible. I know there's information that I wasn't prepared to present, but um, if you wanna follow up with the questions that I wasn't able to answer, just let me know and I'll go find that information and get it to you.
Thank you so much. I would entertain a motion to accept, uh, the report. See a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you, sir.
Please vote yes. All opposed? No? Motion passes by a vote of five to zero. The next item of business is a discussion and, um, regarding our April focus group dis- uh, focus group discussions with individuals detained in the county detention center. I wanna say to, um, to our new members that once a month, uh, we go in, we go in, a, a, a combination of us so as not to violate a quorum. So up to three, um, of us generally would go in along with any of the trust members that would also like to go with us. And we meet with a group of men, uh, can be any, anywhere from six to twenty men who reside in the detention center. And we ask them a series of questions about the things that we have been tracking and we get some very honest and raw feedback. And then we go over and, and we do the same thing with, uh, with women who reside in the facility. Uh, we write down verbatim what they tell us. Um, and then we present the report both to the other members of the Citizens Advisory Board as well as to the members of the jail trust. I would just take this time to, to state, the reason we do this is because we believe those closest to the situation can give us the best account of what's actually happening. But we also do this because we're seeking to get buy-in from those who are closest to the situation to help us solve the problems. And we wanna rely on their expertise and their wisdom, believing that those closest to the problems are likely also closest to the solution. If we will take time to listen. So what I'm gonna do very, very quickly is just read the report of, for the public record of, um, of what we were told from our last focus groups that occurred on July the eighteenth. Um, with, uh, Mr. James Johnson, who is a member of the trust, present along with myself and Dr. Christine Byrd. Um, here's the report from the men residing in the detention center. The men indicated that the quality of food has improved and is, but is generally served in a quote rushed manner, especially breakfast. They indicated that the food trays aren't always clean and that portions of the food are inconsistent and can be hit or miss on occasion. Meaning what they very clearly said to us is that sometimes they have more than enough to eat and sometimes they don't have enough. They also indicated that they're served a lot of bread and a lot of carbohydrates. The men reported that the items in the canteen are overpriced and too expensive. They did state that alternative options such as generic brands of items are available to the more expensive brands, but they wanted the more expensive brands to be more affordable. The men commended, uh, communicated that there, and this is a direct quote, that there are zero issues with bedbugs or roaches. They said that they are allowed out of their cells consistently and routinely on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays for two to three hours each day. But requested more time out of their cells on, uh, for recreation and to shower on the weekends. I would tell you that it's been our experience that because of staffing levels on the weekends, generally speaking, individuals are not allowed out of their cells and they can go a couple of days without having access to, to shower. And that's something that's very important, uh, to them. They stated that, uh, their electronic tablets do not always work and that there is a shortage of tablets within the facility, within the pod. The men said interactions with staff at the facility are okay and depend on the individual staff members. They said the interactions with certain staff are very positive and interactions with other staff. They said the interactions with certain staff are very positive and interactions with other staff can be negative. They indicated that access to quality of mental health care and physical health services are lacking and suggested greater training for staff to know how to help a person who battles addiction. The men stated a desire for more programming and revealed that programming is pretty limited. Areas of improvement for the men include better processes for expressing concerns and communicating with staff members. Several individuals voiced frustration in relation to the process for appearing in court. The men stated that the holding cells for court is, are unclean and that they often miss meals when they're participating in their court proceedings. They highlighted a need to expedite the delivery of medical care and related services and again expressed a desire to have access to showers on the weekends. Ending on a positive note, the men identified having routine out of their, uh, time out of their cells during the week, sufficient food portions and interactions with the jail trust members directly and members of the citizens advisory board as the most positive aspect inside the detention center. I just want to pause and tell our citizens advisory board, they feel validated when we're able to go in and say, hey, can you tell us what's going on and what do you think? How could we improve this situation? Um, the women, the women from our July focus groups indicated that the food is not always prepared properly and that the variety of food is somewhat limited, especially when it comes to breakfast. They expressed a desire to have more fresh fruit and more vegetables in their diet and stated that the healthcare conditions such as diabetes are often neglected in the dietary regimen. The women reported that canteen items are too expensive. They reported the situation with bedbugs and mice is better and that bedbugs are quote, no longer an issue. They communicated a need to change clothing and wash their clothes and sheets more frequently. The men's, uh, the women rather, stated it can be challenging to communicate with their family members, especially for a person who is indigent. And they stated a strong desire for in-person visits with families, uh, family members, especially children. And they suggested maybe that could be as an incentive. Maybe we could work toward a time if we're just dreaming where based on good behavior and proper conduct, maybe they could work their way up to having an in-person visit with their family, uh, or children in a perfect world. That's what they would ask for. The women stated that the interaction with the staff at the Oklahoma County Detention Center is streaky and said some staff do not give much effort while other staff go above and beyond consistently. They said that they are routinely allowed out of their cell from nine-thirty to two PM, nine-thirty AM to two PM, four days a week. But again, they requested time out of their cell on Saturday or Sunday to shower. The women conveyed they do not always have access to proper hygiene products and access to healthcare is often slow and/or delayed. They said they often need more toilet paper and would like access to a razor for personal care. They expressed a desire for more programming such as parenting classes, recovery, uh, meetings, victim impact classes, life skills and reentry courses. Areas of recommendations for improvement from the women include more balanced nutrition, more fruits and vegetables in their diet, access to sunlight and fresh air and permission to shower on the weekends and more affordable canteen items. The women identified the cleanliness of the facility, the fresh paint and the elimination of bedbugs as the most positive aspect inside the detention center. Happy to answer any questions or receive any comments based on the feedback from the most recent, um, round of focus groups from individuals who reside in the facility. Mr. Durant, you're recognized.
This is only my second meeting, but I can recall that some of the very same things were reported at the last meeting. Um, and, and I'm going to assume that that's been the case forever. And, and one of the things in, in two of the men's comments and two of the women's comments, again, I'm going to get a little bit on my soapbox about medical care. Um, a need for expedited delivery of medical care was, was quoted in the men's side and, uh, access to healthcare is often slow and/or delayed. I, I guess my question for you, Chairman Steele, was, is this, did you hear the same thing when Turnkey was running it as opposed to when, uh, the, the trust took over the operation of medical on its own?
It's a great question and, and I would also just state that we have been conducting these focus groups for nearly three years now. And, and I, I want to say two things. When we started, uh, the first five comments were about how bad the bedbugs were when we first started. And we have seen tremendous progress. Uh, in fact, the, the direct quotes are there, that's no longer an issue. You don't, I mean, last two months, they said, you don't even need to ask us about that anymore. That's a, that's a big time, um, improvement. I would also just state while the quality of food is not, uh, what anybody would desire and we, you've got the direct comments, uh, the portions and the quality of food has also improved from, based on the, 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 the voice of those who, um, uh, reside there since we started doing this. And believe it or not, probably the access of, of medical care, uh, has also improved since the time that Turnkey had it. Um, we, we received, um, um, consistent and probably more dire reports about the quality of healthcare in years past. Um, not, not suggesting that we're, we're where we need to be or want to be, but just to give the honest report of, of what we're seeing since we, we started this. Thank you for the question. Other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, do we know or can we find out, both the men and women indicated the cost of the canteen items? Do we have any idea what kind of markup? Are we trying to, is a county trying to make money off the inmates through the canteen? Or are we selling at cost or, or can we get that information?
We, we can get that information. I will tell you that we, we, we have, we are hearing consistently about the, the cost of canteen. Uh, and so Mr. Johnson requested a, a price sheet and I will also provide that to you all. Uh, we took the price sheet in with us and as I understand it, Mr. Timmons, thank you for hanging around because I think we're going to get into some pretty significant discussion in just, just short order that you may be interested in. But as I understand it, um, the Oklahoma County Detention Center contracts out with a vendor to provide the canteen and that vendor ultimately sets the prices. But it's, it's renewed or rejected, that contract is renewed or rejected on an annual basis. And again, what I would tell you is that, to be fair, some of the items on that list that we have are high. I mean, uh, particularly, I'm just going to tell you one thing that I can remember is a bar of ivory soap was very high in my estimation. But there's, um, a generic version of a bar of soap that seems affordable to me. I mean, or at least in line with what other people may, what we may purchase at the grocery store. So, it's a mixed bag. But I don't, um, Mr. Timmons, do you want to comment on how the commissary works and maybe who sets those prices?
Again, that's an area that I'm not real familiar with, but from my understanding, um, the prices are fairly in line with what you're able to, of what you would pay at a convenience store. Um, candy bar. I know they were complaining about the price of candy bars at one time. And you go to a store now and it's two dollars, over two dollars for a candy bar. And I think that they were charging around the same price as, as at a, uh, convenience store. Um, as far as some of the other items, uh, I know there's a bit of a markup, um, on the commissary items. And, uh, I know that as far as the phone services, you know, we were instructed to lower the rates on the phone calls. And so I think we, we end up taking about a, uh, I want to say around a twenty thousand dollar a month decrease in revenue from the phone calls because we were instructed to, to lower the rate for the, the phone calls. Um, I, I apologize. I just don't have a lot of information on the commissary. I don't. There are people that are within the facility that know way more about it than I do. And I know that we're in the process of, uh, going out for bids again with another provider for those services, food services, and that'll include co- commissary.
Seeing no additional questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to receive the report concerning the focus groups from the month of July.
I make a motion that we receive the report for the focus group?
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. For those of no, motion passes by a vote of five to zero. Um, as we get into, uh, items four, five, six and seven, I want to, um, provide some context. When the citizens advisory board was, um, established, uh, so were four subcommittees within, within our board. And just by way of reminder, those four subcommittees include recruitment and retention of staff. That's one subcommittee that would just focus in working with Mr. Timmons and the HR group at the detention center to, uh, recruit and produce strategies to recruit and retain staff, strategies that we could recommend to the jail trust to, to perhaps to, to adopt and consider. Um, second subgroup would be community relationships. A third subgroup would be policy and procedures and the fourth subgroup is operations. I mention all these together because the, the following agenda items that we're getting into uh, relate to the composition of our subgroups we need to repopulate our subgroups. Um, I would also state that in addition to the five people who are present today, uh, Aaron Engelke uh, is our vice chair of the, of the trust or, or of the, of the citizens advisory board. And Dr. Christine Byrd is also on the citizens advisory board. So, we currently have seven members, but we are constituted for nine members. So, we have two vacancies. And, um, I know for a fact that, uh, Mr. Buck, the chair of the trust, has received three nominations uh, to fill those two vacancies. And I think they're working through that even as we speak. But I say that to say this, um, we would ask that you choose one of these four subcommittees to serve on and potentially chair. Uh, we need a chair for each of the subgroups. The final thing I would say is that in the past, when we were fully, uh, uh, had a fully functioning cab, we had, uh, at least three members from among us to serve on each of these committees. So, you might pick two committees, one that you would want a little bit more responsibility with. But, and then in addition to that, we gave ourselves permission to appoint at least three additional members, um, or two additional members so that we'd have an odd number from the general public to also serve on the subcommittees. So, we, we would have a, a, a bigger reach and have more involvement. So, as we begin to reorganize and as we begin to, um, uh, become active and hitting on all cylinders again, um, I would tell you that only myself and Aaron, uh, have served on a subcommittee. Uh, we've, we've had a lot of attrition in the last three, nearly four years now. And so the, the subcommittees are wide open for population, uh, wide open to serve. For our new members, I'm not going to necessarily put you on the spot today, but I am going to follow up with you and, um, and I thought, I thought, I thought Ms. Jones was throwing a punch. She was just grabbing my pen. Um, uh, I am going to follow up with you to ask you where you would like to serve and, and please be mindful to, to be ready to serve on at least two committees. And if you have capacity and our interest in chairing, um, one of these committees, please know that the opportunity will be there. We'll work with, with Ms. Cassie uh, and her staff to make sure that we get your meetings when we get these filled out and, and, uh, make the official appointments to, with, from the, the community at large. Um, to each of the subcommittees, we'll, we'll make sure that we get the time for you to meet on a regular basis scheduled so that you can do the work. And then the final thing I would say at this point in, in line with our discussion, and I'm kind of leading some things here, is that the hope is the subcommittees would bring a report and a recommendation to our full cab meeting. Uh, and that the work that you do within your subcommittee, when it's adopted by the cab, would then be presented to the trust. And Mr. Oklahoma, I appreciate you being here, uh, today very much. So, ultimately, we want to ask that you guys, uh, work and, and Mr. Timmons is, is, is as accessible as anybody I've ever worked with. Um, and, and would be available and his, his staff, I assume, would be available to help support and provide any information that you would need. Um, I, I think just to honor our time, um, and I'm conscious of the time, we've got these on the agenda items. I might just run through these very, very quickly and, and see if there is an interest. Uh, again, we won't make official appointments. We'll have to come back and, and make a full recommendation, uh, at our next meeting. But since we have the agenda items, I'm just going to ask, when, agenda item number four, discussion, review and possible action uh, pertaining to the current composition for the recruitment and retention of staff subcommittee?
I would be interested in serving on that committee and/or possibly chair.
I am, I am looking for that.
I, I apologize if you can speak into the mic for me.
I'm sorry. Uh, I said I would be very interested in serving on that particular subcommittee and possibly even chairing it.
Thank you.
I'd be interested in serving on that committee.
That's the spirit. That's what I'm looking for. I, I'm just taking note, um. Cassie, I'm going to look for you. I'm not, we're not filling these out. I'm just, we're just having the discussion. Do we need to vote on anything or can we?
If, if you're not formally appointing, I don't believe so because you're just having discussion.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm hoping. That's, I wanted to get this so that we could talk about it and, and have the context and get some ideas and then we can follow up. And in our next meeting, we'll come back and make the official appointment.
Yes, and for that you would need to do motions.
Okay, perfect. Um, we're going to move down to agi- agenda item number five, discussion, review and possible action of the composition of the community relationship subcommittee and just ask if there are, is any interest as we're thinking and as we're together so that I can follow up.
I would be interested.
Thank you. Interested maybe as a chair?
Uh, to participate in, possibly as a chair.
Okay, I love it. Love it. Perfect. We're going to go on to agenda item number six, which is discussion, possible action regarding the composition of the policies and procedures subcommittee. And I would just ask if there's any interest among the policy and procedure or to serve on the policy and procedures subcommittee?
I would be interested in that also.
Great, great.
And, and I'm sorry, would you add me to, uh, community relationships?
Gladly, gladly. Perfect. And then finally, agenda item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding the composition of the operations subcommittee?
I would be interested in serving on that committee.
Thank you.
I would as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Guys are amazing. Perfect. That gives me what I need to follow up and, um...
Can I ask a question?
You sure may.
So, I would think six and seven are kind of closely related. Would, would that be a fair assessment?
When we, I think there is some overlap. I think there is some overlap. Um, and I think the two subcommittees will need to be working together, communicating, you know, with one another. Mr. Kearns, I would also say we are open if it, if it, if it, if it makes more sense for efficiency sake to combine, to combine those two committees. I think that that's a discussion that we can also have. Um, we'll put it on the agenda for next, uh, for next month and, and, and think through that and make that decision. I think that could be, I think that could be advantageous. We, we do want to be, uh, efficient and, and I think there is some potential overlap. Thank you all for the, for the feedback and for the, for the interest in... Thank you all for the, for the feedback and for the, for the interest and for the willingness to serve. Um, greatly, greatly appreciated. Uh, agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action regarding medical services for residents inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center. We will open this up and, uh, um, Mr. Durant, we'll start with you and then Mr. Dismuks will go to you.
Chairman Steele, I appreciate it. You, I think you probably put this on the agenda at kind of my request, but I, I first of all, want to say that again, because of, of my real life, uh, I've had an opportunity to sit and visit with Director Timmons and his staff in regard to medical services and the way it is handled at the detention center. Uh, we, we've had, for clarification and, and transparency, I, I work for SSM Health St. Anthony Hospital. We've had some, uh, issues with some things and Mr. Timmons and his staff have been more than willing to sit and visit with us and try and work through some of those issues. Uh, a- as a matter of fact, he and I were talking before the meeting and I reached out to one of our nurse managers yesterday to see if we had any issues of late since our meeting. And I'm proud to say, as I told him, I didn't hear anything. So no news is good news in my opinion. However, one of, I, the, the thing that, that concerns me the most and, and as you heard me already today, i- is the speed and, and the amount of time that it's taking maybe even to, to, for inmates to get the needed care that they need inside the facility and/or transport to other facilities, be it us or another facility in Oklahoma City. And, and I, I really want us to be mindful of that. We have a long history at St. Anthony of, of working with the county and, and the jail. We go back to the armor days. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with the armor medical services that we used to have, and they were absolutely terrible, uh, for, I, 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 there's no other way to put it. Our citizens of Oklahoma City, incarcerated or not, deserve better treatment than what they got from armor. When turnkey came in, I will tell you that it was a hundred and eighty degrees from armor. And, and the services, the, and the, the ability for us to deal with turnkey was, was incredible. So it was a, a breath of fresh air. And now with the, the county running it in themselves because they have not put it out for a bid for anybody else, they're, they're handling it in-house. And I don't know if it is financially better or not. I will just say that, uh, Donna and her staff are, are great to work with. Mr. Timmons, again, I, I commend you for sitting down with us. I, I just, I want us to be cognizant as, as the Citizens Advisory Board. What we're here for are the citizens and those people that are incarcerated are our citizens. And they deserve to be treated with humanity and they deserve to be treated with respect and they deserve medical care just like you or I do. And, and so I just want to make sure that we are able and are providing the services uh, inside the jail that they need. And, and, and if we need to look at doing something different, then I think that the trust and Mr. Buck and, and his group, uh, might need, I, I, I'm not saying that they need to do this, but there may be uh, an opportunity, uh, to, to put in our, out in RFP for medical services. I don't know. I, I, I think that's one of the things that we would, they would need to look at operationally is, is the cost. Everybody is, is, is concerned about as well we should be, the cost of all the services. I want to make sure that we are good stewards of the money of the taxpayers, but I also want to make sure that those that are incarcerated are getting the best possible medical care. And, and I will say at this point in time, from my perspective, being very close to it, I think we're doing a great job. Uh, and, and I think even though there, there were a few things in here in the report from, from the focus groups, uh, that we can improve on, I, I do think that we're doing a better job than, than what I've seen in the past.
Uh, um, Mr. Durant, I want to thank you for your comments, um, and for this discussion. I also just want to reiterate, um, not only is it, not only are your comments and suggestions appropriate, they comprise ultimately our responsibility. Um, and so as we get into this and as we become fully functioning, uh, we are expected to make recommendations, uh, to the trust. Now, Mr. Mr. Oakley and the, and the members of the trust can wholeheartedly reject the recommendations. They can accept the recommendations. They can amend the recommendations. Uh, our job is to advise and, and to suggest and, and to make recommendations. And so I just, I want to underscore, um, our responsibility and our role eh, by affirming, um, what you just shared with us. And Mr. Dismuks?
I think, yeah, I kind of echo what Mr. Durant was saying. Uh, there were a couple of things that came up when I did the, the tour, uh, in the jail and we were doing, uh, the, uh, interviews with the, the residents. And that's, eh, eh, there are several questions that came out of it. One of them that I, I keep going back to is a fifteen dollar charge for making a request for medical services. And trying to understand that because that's, that is also something that would inhibit, and that's probably why it's there, uh, for some of those requests to be, to be made. But the other piece of that was requests for things that then would be delivered days and in some circumstances, what we were told even a week or two after the request. I don't know if there is a, a system to monitor that to see where those delays and those gaps might be and if they, and really do exist. But I think it's a really kind of a start for an understanding on our, in this, my interest in policy and procedures. And how we're operating and how we're trying to operate in this environment, which I know is a very difficult environment. Eh, and that there are a lot of additional challenges that, that happen there. But it also ties back to what I was asking about with recidivism. And what we're seeing there with medical conditions, particularly behavioral health conditions. And our opportunities to potentially, um, one, find ways to move some of this population from the jail, uh, utilizing the tools that are available. And, and of course, I'm not saying this is going to be just the jail. It, it isn't just the jail. This is bringing in the district attorney's office. This is bringing in defensive, uh, defense attorneys, particularly in the general defense. Uh, and really having discussions on, on how we can better serve these individuals who are citizens. Uh, and provide these types of services. Number one, it is a cost issue for some of, on a, on a community level. I know that. And I've worked in that arena and trying to deliver medical services, uh, with government funding. But it's also something I don't know that we, uh, and I realized over the years, we can't deal with simply on a cost, uh, basis because if we don't address and pay those costs upfront, which might be uh, less than what we're going to see with the consequences on the end, which we certainly are seeing cost with recidivism. So it's important to me to, to look at that, see what that structure is. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that I've seen, eh, and I think I had some early questions at our first meeting. We were talking about, well, bringing these services back into the jail. But where are we with staffing since turnkey left? And it sounded like we were building a system and I'm assuming we still are building a system, but how do you, where are we now? Uh, eh, as far as staffing with those services compared to when turnkey was here? Uh, and, and I have heard also that things are much better, uh, moving forward and then challenges over the years. So I'm not complaining about that, but uh, what, eh, where are we with those staffing levels? And as we build up, it seems that we won't be able to get to some of the things that we need to get to. Uh, if we're slowly increasing staff and I, and I'm interested in the challenges there about bringing that staff in. And I think the other part of that is, and that, and you alluded to this, uh, Chairman Steele, that we eh, you know, looking at what is better to do something internally or, or to work on the outside, but I think we should also look at a hybrid. What are those services that we can bring in from the community? How can we better partner with the community? Knowing that in years past, some years ago, there was more partnership, particularly on the behavioral health side that was occurring. And I don't know that that's occurring now the same way that we have in the past. And, and there are some hiccups to doing that. Uh, but there also seems to be incredible potential uh, in looking at this from a community perspective and investing in those services that we have in the community, which frankly, will benefit others in the community, uh, by helping with workforce issues and, and expansion of, of capability. Um, you know, Saints is just one or SSM, sorry, I'm still used to calling it Saints. Saints is one that's an incredible, uh, resource that's sitting there. Of course, I've worked with the CCBHCs uh, and many of the substance use treatment providers, uh, within the community and they have incredible resources. It seems like we can start maybe bring together, um, groups of these people to, to help with solutions here and with ideas and, and how to do things better and, and utilize some of that, uh, that knowledge base. Again, in my experience, we've, we've moved throughout many of our government operations into side load uh, decision-making. Uh, and this would be a good time to bring others in the community into this solution process. I think the jail itself is blamed for far too many things that, that have other factors contributing to, to how, how this has worked. We talked about that today with what we're seeing with numbers coming in and who's bringing those numbers in. I think it's important for us to, to try to reach out and help others understand this is something that this community needs. It impacts more than just the county, obviously. It impacts the city. It impacts surrounding cities. It impacts all of our lives. This is something we need to care about. And, uh, and to me, that starts with enough.
Thank you so much for the robust discussion. Are there other comments? Other, other topics to discuss in relation to medical services for the folk inside the detention center? Seeing none, we will move to agenda item number nine, which is discussion and possible action regarding access to reentry processes inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center. Mr. Dismuks, you're recognized.
So it's really kind of a start of the question and what I, eh, to me, this all, all ties together. And you talked about where you wanted to be uh, with that reentry process. And in those services, I agree. You know, to me, when we see the recidivism that's occurring, what's our process now for ensuring that people are, are connected as they leave this community? Now, I, I've worked with DOC on a reentry program that was fairly limited, but it was highly successful and touted nationally. And we haven't, I haven't seen that replicated. It should be more replicated throughout DOC. Uh, but certainly we can find ways to do that same type of process, uh, in a jail setting. And, you know, what would, I, eh, we talk a lot in behavioral health, when I just look at behavioral health, about navigation or gaps in services. So when I, eh, and I do this in an inpatient basis over at SSM and, and with others, we work with people who are, uh, in the inpatient settings. And the problem is, is, as you leave that inpatient setting, um, you're usually provided a list of here's you, who you can contact at the community level when you need, if that happens. Sometimes it doesn't necessarily happen that well. But here's a list of contacts in the community. Good luck. And what we talk about when we come into those settings, it's the fact that this is the start of your journey. This is where we need to make sure you're getting connected. And we offer up as a, I tell you what, as you're leaving this, let's see where you're, you're set up to go, if you're set up to go. If not, we'll help you get connected. And then we're going to hold your hand. We're going to help you ask questions as you go in and, and tell you how, uh, this process needs to look, how you can participate in the process. And certainly as they move into those community-based services, there's different services that they're going to be able to get. The case management services, they're going to be able to look at housing, job training and all these pieces that you talk about. I want to know kind of where we are with that process. It seems like it would make sense from a cost basis to do something about it, but it's also, uh, I think would make sense on a community basis. And to see if we can quit contributing some, to some of the other cost issues and problems that we're, we're seeing in the community. Uh, a formal process, and I think it would be interesting to, to look at this again by bringing these partners. How can we make sure that this is happening as people are leaving that we have them connected?
Well, I, I, I have a question for you. Uh, so the model, uh, the way it looks in DOC, who executes that? Is that, um, is it a, is it a community-based organization or is it DOC?
It was DOC in partnership with the Department of Mental Health, uh, is how that started. And it, it was a program that had received significant attention. Uh, and I've been gone from the department. So what they're doing with their reentry programs right now, I don't know, but it was very limited. But again, it was highly successful because as people, we were engaging people in services before they left, we were ensuring that they were linked to those services as they were leaving. And I've seen pieces of that attempted in jail settings, but I don't know how successful that has been. For instance, in Tulsa, there was a, a program to get, begin, uh, mat, uh, mat, uh, services for opiates, uh, to engage people in, in, uh, opiate withdrawal programs and treatment programs. That would then follow them from the jail, uh, to that treatment provider on the outside. From what I remember last on that, that there was a very difficult time following through with that connection as they were leaving the jail. Uh, there were probably, eh, again, multiple challenges with, with these types of things. But the idea to, to initiate services in a jail setting is, is an interesting one. I know recently I was contacted by Johnson and Johnson and I worked with them on some things and they're interested in working in jail spaces and providing their injectables, uh, for free to the jail so that, that that use could start. And, and I, uh, will tell you, I had a discussion with them about where I saw challenges with that. Um, but also see significant opportunity, but you can't do it with just working with the jail. You have to work with everybody else to ensure that once you initiate that in a jail setting, that then, and we have to have an idea of when people would be released because you need to initiate at the right time and a couple of months in before they come out, but you need to make sure they're connected to services on the outside so that that can continue. Uh, injectables are for, uh, primarily for serious mental illness, uh, schizophrenia and bipolar disorder. Have been shown to be highly effective. They don't work with everybody, but they also help with a population that might be unhoused. Uh, and eh, it have it difficult for them to store medications and take medications. Uh, my other interest is it, if we could find a way to engage, and there's blocks to getting people to engage when they're, they're here uh, at the, at a, in a jail setting. Uh, eh, again, it's going to take multiple groups to try to make that happen, but groups like mine are very successful in encouraging people uh, to engage in that type of treatment. I know with what team does and, and how we look at all these different groups, uh, look at this, it seems that having a plan in place and really working through some of these opportunities uh, would be an intelligent next step and to really discuss. But it goes back to my basic question. What is our reentry process?
I, I, first, I think it's an excellent idea. And I, and I think that, uh, potentially rather than adding to the weight of the staffing issues with the county jail, it finds a perfect home couched under the community relationship subcommittee to take it on.
Couldn't agree more. Want to also validate that there's, there's no question that reentry starts pre-release. You, you gotta not only help a person prepare, have a game plan in place, but you also have to develop, uh, trust and, and rapport, um, so that when the transition back to the community occurs, the person has somebody that they can walk with. Um, so love the conversation. I, I would agree that community relationships. And probably when we get into this, some policy and procedures and some operations could, uh, could all play a part in developing and recommending, um, a comprehensive reentry strategy for the, the trust and Mr. Timmons uh, to consider. I, I would just put a fine point on this and, and, and say this, and I, I, I see who's in our audience, um. But let me just tell you, the, the validation for me to know that the right people are on this board and the right leadership is in place. When we start treating people like people and, and focusing on the humanity of, of all of our community, we win. We win. Not a problem we can't solve. So thank you for that. Agenda item number 10 is in relation to our next meeting, special meeting for the Citizens Advisory Board. And as of now, that meeting will take place on September the 17th, assuming it's available. I'm looking at my, my, my boss, my administrator to say, what, what we generally try to do is we try to meet on the Wednesday after the trust meeting so that we can also receive the report and discuss. We've got plenty of work to do between the time we meet and when the, the, the actual trust meet because when we're in full swing, we will be making recommendations in our report to the, the trust. But assuming that September the 17th, Wednesday, September the 17th is available. We normally meet at 11:00 a.m. And I'm talking as slow as I can to try to see what, if that's right as we talk about this and potentially make a tentative announcement.
As of right now, it looks, what I can see from this side, it, it looks available. I will have to obviously confer.
We'll, we'll verify that. I just want to give the, the discussion around the timing of our meetings and also tell you all that they are all categorized this year as a special meeting because we didn't have the quorum to set the regularly scheduled meeting and file that with the Secretary of State's office. But hopefully come next year, we'll be on a regular scheduled meeting. But if, if it holds and if it remains clear, we will plan to meet next on September the 17th at 11:00 a.m.
I will, just to collect the record, reflect in advance, I will not be here. I'll be on vacation that week.
We may, if, if.
Do you have, do we have a capability of Teams or Zoom?
Guys, I'm going to go down. I think we have some redundancy in, in our last agenda items. I'm going to go down to our final, I'm sorry. Oh. You bet, you bet. We're going to go down to the end and just ask if there's general comments from any of our board members prior to adjournment. Any, any comments from our, from our board members? Mr. Kearns?
I apologize for interrupting. Mr. Kearns?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
You addressed and I wanted to ask about it and I, I didn't do it. The, the GED program. So I'm really interested in education. So what does that look like? Obviously, people that were interested in that would be at different phases of their education. Some people might be ready to brush up and take the GED next week and some might need to study for a year. And if they are involved in that and then they're released, what kind of transition is there? Or do we know any of that at this point?
Ms. Jones can be, would be probably the perfect person to speak to that.
Who's that?
Ms. Jones.
Oh, okay.
I would be delighted. So I am Dejean Jones, the CEO of OIC of Oklahoma County. And we are, in, in short speak, a school for adult students. And so OIC will be providing both job readiness classes for the male and female population on Tuesdays for those that are within roughly 45 days of being released. And on Wednesdays, we'll be doing the GED classes, a class for the males, a class for the females. Because we are a national testing center. So there are three groups at the county jail. There are those who have gone through the GED instruction on the tablets that are already available through the course at the county jail, but they haven't tested. So we'll be able to execute the GED testing for that group. The next group are those who are preparing to study, to take their GED test. And so we'll have those classes in there once a week. We have a computer supplement to those classes that'll also be on their tablet so they'll be able to do homework and stuff when they're not in class. And we'll also test on-site for them. Because we have a 59-year history of providing that level of education and training and we are located here in Oklahoma County, as they transition out of custody, they'll be able to maintain contact with us.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. And let me also say thank you for your service and for being willing to accept the appointment. And what a great addition you are to this, to this board. Ms. Jones, any comments? General comments?
Um, I do not. Glad to serve on the board and be a part of the solution.
Fantastic. Also want to say thank you to you, not only for your service here, but just for your, what you're going to be doing with our GED program and your outstanding leadership. Mr. Durant? Mr. Dismuks?
One quick thing. I was able to go, I talked about with the interviews. What month did we do that? In April? I think April, May, right in there. I just wanted to commend the staff who we engaged with at that time. And, and really the environment within the facility. I was in past lives riding often with law enforcement and I, I had a chance to come over here with Highway Patrol a few, a few times when we were doing ride-alongs. And this was early in the jails, after opening. I was amazed at the poor condition of the facility and how it was operated and the staffing environment. And so that's what I, I'd set with that image in my head for decades about this system. And when I came in, was, went through with staff and I looked at how everything was kept up, I was very much impressed. And this was very soon after you taking over the jail and the way that staff talked and the, and hope that I heard in their voice and their concern. I was really impressed with it and I, you know, there are lots of criticisms, obviously, about the facility. That just comes with the job, but I don't know that a lot of people have said how appreciative they are of the people that you have here doing a really hard job and trying to make a difference. So I wanted to at least say that publicly.
So good. Thank you. Mr. Dismuks? I have one comment slash announcement for our, for our Citizens Advisory Board. Once a quarter, the, the nonprofit and several community volunteers, nonprofit that I get to work with and several community volunteers distribute care packages to everyone who is residing in the Oklahoma County Detention Center. The, the care packages are very basic. It's, it's what's been approved. It's a, it's a pair of socks. It's a bar of soap. It's a juice box and some chips and cookies and a note of encouragement. It, it's $4.90 per care package. But I will tell you that with each distribution, we get letters and feedback saying that the care package saved a life that was at the end of the rope and so on and so forth. About 40 people come together to distribute those care packages and the next care package distribution is set to take place on Saturday, October 11th at 9:00 a.m. Saturday, October 11th at 9:00 a.m. There is no obligation whatsoever. I'm just making that, making you aware of that to say that it's a, it's an open invitation if you would all, if any of you would like to participate in that process. And we'll be in lots of communication between now and then, but I wanted to also make that announcement publicly again, just for anybody who may be listening that would like to participate in that endeavor as well. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. There is a motion? A quick one? Okay. And the second, all in favor? And the motion to adjourn passes five to zero. Thank you.